And I stepped up. I took two shots in the arm. Oh! Also, I could look at my students to say, "You see this? This vaccine's for you. It's for us. Now we're all one step closer to ending this pandemic." People like to say that we teachers are heroes. Well, getting vaccinated against COVID-19 is just one more way we can prove them right.
I don't know how humans would have done anything without hope because it's that bridge between now and what can happen.
Hi, everyone. Welcome to the August 2, 2021 Long Meadow Select Board meeting. We start every meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is Select Board Chair Mark Strange. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Steve Morantz.
Here.
Josh Levine.
Here.
Mark Gold.
Here.
And Tom is not with us tonight. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Mike Barbieri.
Here.
This open meeting of Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consistently with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and town's website identifying how the public may join. There is no chat or Q&amp;A function. All of the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless I know otherwise. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comment. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out the public comment form given upon arrival to the meeting. I will call on residents in the order in which the forms are received. For residents participating in the meeting via Zoom webinar, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raised hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelist, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial *9 to raise your hand and *6 to mute and unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual will be afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Okay, and with that, first order of business, which is number four on the agenda, is announcements. First Responder Night. Please join us at an upcoming event hosted by the police and fire departments. First Responder Night will be held on August 10 from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The event will include a cookout and various demonstrations by our first responders. We ask that you bring one perishable item to be donated to the Long Meadow Food Pantry. Please join us in support of our amazing first responders on August 10. Town Treasurer's Abandoned Funds Notice. As per MGL Chapter 200A, Section 9AC, the abandoned funds notice is being posted on behalf of the Town of Long Meadow. Notice of names of persons appearing to be owners of funds held by the Town of Long Meadow and deemed abandoned. You should contact the treasurer's office at (413) 567-1066 or ebrunell@longmeadow.org by September 22, 2021 to redeem funds. Please view the full list of abandoned funds on the newsflash of the homepage at longmeadow.org. Citizen petition articles for the Fall Special Town Meeting are due in the Select Board's office no later than noon on September 17, 2021. In order for a petition to be guaranteed placement on the Special Town Meeting warrant, 100 names, signatures, and addresses of registered town voters are required and must be certified by the town clerk. Forms and instructions to be used for petition articles are available on the homepage of longmeadow.org and also on the Select Board's page. Petition articles will be printed in the warrant verbatim so citizens are asked to review the forms and instructions carefully. You can view the full article submission memo and warrant schedule on the newsflash of the homepage. Last but not least, we have a planning board vacancy. The Town of Long Meadow is seeking a resident to fill a vacancy on the planning board. Any Long Meadow resident interested in being considered for appointment to fill this vacancy is required to submit an application, cover letter, and resume to the Select Board's office, which is at 20 William Street in Long Meadow, by August 9. Applications are available on the Boards and Commissions page of the town website. Please submit a cover letter and resume with your application to admin assistant@longmeadow.org. The appointment will be for a term ending in June 2022, which is the next annual town election. Applicants will be required to attend an interview conducted jointly by the Select Board and Planning Board on Monday, August 16 at 7:00 p.m. at the Long Meadow High School Meeting Room A15. And those are the announcements. Next on the agenda is resident comments. Do we have anybody who wants to say anything?
Yes, I have Dave in Zoom right now. Let's move him in. This'll be a great test. Hi, Dave, can you hear us?
I can, yes.
Wow, this is awesome.
Dave, can you state your name for the record and your address?
Yes, I'm Dave Marinelli, and my address is 9 Overbrook Lane.
And do you have comments tonight, Dave?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I imagine that the Select Board has recently reorganized and assigned people to committees, and I want to thank you all for the time that you invest for the good of the town. And welcome one of you to participate on the Tree Committee if you're interested. It's a nice committee. We all get along well. It's not a heavy lift. We meet once a month, and the meetings never go an hour. They're usually half an hour to 40 minutes. And we would very much like to have a participant on the Select Board for our meetings. Our next meeting is coming up this Thursday, and I'd be happy to share an agenda with anybody that might be interested. I don't want to put any pressure on anybody publicly, but we'd very much like to have a participant. Marie and Jaleed used to come from time to time, and we thought it was a great way to find out what was going on in the town and also contribute our point of view about what we consider to be the most important committee other than the Select Board.
Anybody have any questions for Dave? So the meetings are the first Thursday of every month?
It's not always the first Thursday. We didn't meet in July. I snoozed on posting the notice. So actually, the July meeting got pushed into August. And we're flexible about timing. If Thursday is a conflict, we would be happy to pick a different day and time. We generally meet at 6 o'clock. That seems to work for most people. But I understand you all have a lot of commitments, and we're happy to be flexible.
We can pull the board, Dave, and see if anybody's available and/or interested. I'm actually going to be out Thursday, or else I'd stop by myself. But we'll get back to you before Thursday.
Great, thank you very much.
Anybody else? Alrighty. Agenda item number six is Board and Committee Interviews.
Mary Beth Bergeron, First on the list, who is applying for reappointment to the Council on Aging Board of Directors for a three-year term expiring in June of 2024.
Hello. Hello. Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane, here in town.
Do you want to tell us why you would like to re-up your appointment to the COA?
Yes, to be perfectly frank, I have sat on the Council on Aging Board of Directors for a number of years. I think this coming period of time with the opening of the new adult center, my knowledge of the building and operations will be valuable to the Council on Aging Board, which is why I'm reapplying.
Anybody have any questions for MB?
Can you explain the intersection between the Council of Aging and the new adult center as you see it?
Oh. Are you talking about my, as in my capacity as the chairman of the building committee?
No, no, just there's, we now built this adult center. Council on Aging, the intersection between those two, and you're on, you are applying for the Council of Aging, so.
Correct, right. Well, the Council on Aging Board of Directors, their job is to advise and the current director, which is Jim Layden, on operations. And those operations obviously entail the details of the building. The Council on Aging, my understanding is that the Council on Aging will be open more hours, and the Board of Directors would be advising Jim on the hours that the adult center would be in occupancy of the building, which is either 8 or 9 o'clock in the morning until 3 or 4 o'clock in the afternoon. After that period of time, the hope is is the building will be open for the general public, specifically for committee meetings, for lectures. Certainly, the gymnasium and possibly the fitness room would be open for the use of the general public. So the merger between the Council on Aging Board of Directors and the new building is really limited, I would think, to those hours and to, as I said, advise Jim on any new ideas specifically for programming, which I think is going to be critical for the success of the Council on Aging for the adult center. As you know, we have two cohorts of elders in our community. We have the elder, the senior citizen, I guess, who is aged 60 to 75, and their interests are somewhat different between the elder, who is, let's say, 75 to 90. Combine that with the social services that take place out of the adult center, and those include the food pantry, the Shine Program, which the outreach coordinator takes care of, the nurse's office, and the veterans' office. Those social services are integral to the success of the Council on Aging and specifically to our residents who are elderly. The food bank is become, unfortunately through the pandemic, more critical to our town. There has been a rise in the uses of the food pantry, who are suffering from people who are residents, who are suffering from food insecurity, from somewhere around 30 people a week that they service up to 75. And so there is a great need. I'm so glad that the first responders event is taking place because right now there is a great need for donations from the general community for food pantry items. So it's a big bundle that the adult center is going to be handling. But again, the community would be using the building, and perhaps the Council on Aging might run some programs during the evening, but their primary responsibility is during the day. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Good. Maybe more than you wanted.
Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next, is it okay? Next, we have Benjamin Tansky. Do you go by Ben or Benjamin? Is that fine? Benjamin. And he is applying for a one-year associate term on the Cable Advisory Committee, which has newly become open as the annual appointments began. So it's a one-year term ending in June of 2022 for the Cable Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Hey, Ben.
Good evening.
Thanks so much for volunteering to step up. Do you want to just tell us a little bit about your background that might lend some of your own flavor to the Capitol Advisory Committee?
Absolutely. Benjamin Tansky, 130 Crestview Circle. My background is in technology. I work in an organization in New York City, and we've built a ground-up infrastructure, a fixed wireless infrastructure. And living here for just about a year and change, it's awesome. It's a great town. You guys do a great job, this whole team here, ladies and gentlemen. But the one shortfall, and it's a common denominator across the country, is the actual infrastructure for telecommunications in this country. Watching your meetings online during the pandemic and remote schooling, my kids are in remote schooling. It's always a give and take. You know, the architecture in town is fiber to a pole, and then it's coax distributed out. I would love to see some competition. And if there's a way to also monetize this for the town's benefit to help everybody would be tremendous. There is a town nearby that set up a municipal fixed wireless network infrastructure. My background is this exactly in large metropolitan areas. It works, the technology is proven. There's big name brands like Facebook. They have these network architectures that are being deployed. Puerto Rico is a great example. They were decimated with the infrastructure after the storms. And the only way to bring it back online was with fixed wireless, and this is how they're connected right now. I would also just love to, you know, if we can go as far as we can, fixed wireless infrastructure would be great, but just to make sure that the town is getting, the town is getting everything from your existing contracts with your current providers. I did find some documentation online. I read the agreements. It's good, but there's really, there's no mention of any capital improvements pretty much whatsoever, except adding a channel for the TV, which most people watch TV, but most people care more about quality internet, fiber to the home, FTTH is the acronym, fiber to the home, or in this case, fixed wireless to the home. So I would just love to help and understand a little bit more, kind of absorb how the town runs with infrastructure, and see if I can help in any way possible, really. That's it.
That's great. Any questions?
Benjamin, thank you for replying. I don't know if you had a chance to, but if not, maybe you can go back and look at a couple of Select Board meetings ago when we talked to our Cable Advisory Committee about wireless. You know, one of the things we did is sent them on a mission, and they came back with a, I have to admit, it was kind of a downer recommendation because of capital costs. But have you had a chance to look at that? Or have you had a chance to talk to anybody on the Cable Committee?
I did. I spoke, I can't recall who, but the number I heard was, you know, the number is the number, but it's really a fraction of the cost of what it would cost to build fiber to the home. You know, maybe let's say it's $3 million build cost, which is really nominal considering if you have a fiber build, you're talking about more of a $300 million build cost. I mean, you're running fiber, you're paying unions, you're running trucks. The beauty with fixed wireless is, to my knowledge, the poles, the pole space, the town controls. But most of the town is, you have power lines, but some is, some are buried in the newer sections of town. But to alleviate that, you know, let's say it's a $3 million number, you go out and charge $50 per user, and they get a better quality service so you can work from home. I work from home, and it's challenging, to say the least. Sometimes it's a consistent connection, other times it's a roller coaster, and you're on conference calls like here or during the day whenever, when a lot of people are at home. It could be frustrating, but the math, the upfront cost is inevitable. You must build out data center space nearby in Springfield's data center. You can go from there to the water tower in town and then broadcast out to strategic nodes using different types of technologies out there. But without a doubt, there is a capital expenditure. But I don't foresee that as a major obstacle with maybe two years or less. The ROI should be there.
Interesting.
Thank you.
And the fixed wireless network you would like us to at least investigate or is not your fixed wireless network that you work for?
No, no, no.
The general fixed wireless network concept.
Exactly. There's another, the technology is moving very quickly. And to be honest, the traditional carriers are nervous because it's, the cost it is to deploy is significantly less than having to rerun coax cable and fiber everywhere. So, and you can transport a ton of bandwidth over it.
So the fiber you're talking about, like that, you're talking about Westfield, the Wip City Fiber?
No, it's, no, it was fixed wireless. It was G, I can't remember the company.
Greenfield.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so rather than running lines, it's all, we would all just connect from our devices to a node somewhere?
Not as simple as that. Imagine you have, let's say, a dinner plate, a size antenna on your house. Put it this way, you've seen, we're driving Bliss Road, getting to know the streets around here, but I've seen satellite dishes on, you know, 10-foot PVC pipes or whatnot. Those antennas are big. These antennas we're talking about are less than half the size of that, and could either sit on a roof, could sit on a pole on the public way, and your house would have another antenna connecting to that. But at the end of the day, no matter what type of But at the end of the day, no matter what type of last-mile connectivity you have, everyone has to go back to the same data center, which is in Springfield in this case.
So, is this on top of?
This would be separate.
The coax and the lines that are behind the house, or is this, you replace it?
I wouldn't replace it, it would be.
It's an alternative to Comcast.
It's an alternative. And, you know, the reason why I'm sitting here is because I read that. I read the agreement that you have with them, and there's really no mention of capital improvements, which is so frustrating, because they have fiber in the streets. I talked to multiple carriers, I talked to Crown Castle, I talked to Comcast, and the build cost to come to my location was astronomical, you know. It doesn't need to be that way, but it's a lot of his education, you know. I guess I should have come with some slides or some pictures, I suppose. I can send you them.
So, Mr. Tansky, I guess my question, my follow-up question is, cable, the cable contracts and its final throes here, you know, if you listen to our interview, or my interview of our Comcast representative, they have no desire, no need to, and as you indicated, no wish, you know, they're not going to put in capital improvements. Why do you want to do this through the Cable Advisory Committee? Why wouldn't you want to talk to the town manager and get on a, form a committee that talks about alternative town internet services, and just do it outside the Cable Advisory Committee, which is, which would suit me well, but I don't know if it would suit anybody else well. I mean, it's not a natural cable advisory thing. The only reason we sent it to the Cable Advisory is they seem to have some expertise in evaluating Comcast and alternatives. But the question is, if this is truly your interest and the reason for your application, could this interest not be met through an alternative means of getting you and a group of people to come back to the Select Board with the recommendation, rather than go through the Cable Advisory Committee?
Absolutely, but now we're sitting all together, it's the perfect time to get this done. And I completely agree with you. But again, I would not take away what you currently have, never, but you always want to reinvest in it. And what I'm, again, what I'm reading is, they're just not reinvesting in it, and it's very frustrating, because our prices go up every year, and the services remain the same, and they get, they get more saturated. That means that more people are connecting to the internet, and all they're doing is they're compressing it further. They use a system called DOSIS, and that's just a highly compressed connection over coax. But I don't want to get into too, I don't want to get too granular, but absolutely, there should be, we should talk about that. But I just wanted to start the dialogue, I figured this would be a great place to start it.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is appointment of candidates to the Conservation Commission, Tree Committee, and Historical Commission. Can I get a motion?
Well, I would move that we appoint Patrick Cardahan to the three-year term on the Conservation Commission, and to the three-year term on the Tree Committee. And then Stephen Weiss to the three-year term on the Historical Commission.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mike Colgall, please.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next up is Select Board comments. Anybody have any comments tonight? Yes.
Comment on, we had Frank Smith come to the board a couple of weeks ago, he had a variety of questions on the board about what would happen should EverSource decide that they're going to build this pipeline. And although I'm not sure of the answers, I got this because I was sent back to Frank Smith, who sent me a copy. I'm not sure if these answers to these questions were sent to the rest of the Select Board or not, but they should be. I have a specific question of Lynn, though, because one of the questions was, has EverSource been in touch with the town manager, or any town officials, or town committees regarding the proposed site of their new high-pressure pipeline? And one of the things that was brought to our attention from an outside source was, they were thinking of filing on July 15th, from August 15th deadline. This statement says, yes, the town manager met with EverSource. And my question to you, Lynn, is, did you call them, or did they call you up and say, oh, by the way, we're not going to file? You know, I mean, who initiated this contact?
I believe I did, after a Select Board meeting, when a resident came and spoke on the timeline.
Right. So, in reality, to this point in time, from, although I think you mentioned in the fall or December, you had a conversation with EverSource. But since that time, EverSource has not initiated any contact with anybody in town about this that you know of?
After that resident came, I reached out, they gave me an update on where they were, and then they did reach back out again, telling me they were not going to meet that August timeline for filing.
Right. So, that was in response to you?
Yes.
So, in reality, though, they have not really done a whole lot of job of communicating with us spontaneously, it's been, okay, a question. But I do also, I would, since I got this from Mr. Smith, you really should make sure the rest of the board gets the answers to these questions, because they're not insignificant.
Nothing? Okay, thank you. Excuse me. Next up is the Town Manager's Report.
For COVID-19 update, at the time of drafting this memo, which was last Thursday, there are five COVID-19 cases in town. The Board of Health is continuing to monitor those cases, and also keeping up with the changing recommendations on masking from the CDC, as well as some state agencies that came out late last week. As of now, we're going to continue with our current relaxed masking requirements. However, if cases increase and we see trends go in the wrong direction, we may revisit that. The Converse Street sewer improvements, a meeting was held with the contractor, the town, and the bonding company the week of July 19th, to determine how to move forward on the project to stay in conformance with the contract. After discussion with the contractor, the contractor was permitted back on the job site to conclude the project. The sewer replacement project was expected to be concluded the week of July 26th, which it was last week. The Assistant Town Manager Planning and Community Development Director position, I'm pleased to announce that a selection was made to fill that new position for Assistant Town Manager. This was part of the FY 22 budget, and Corinne Mice-Muns was hired and will be joining the town at the end of August. Corinne comes to us from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, where she serves as a senior land use planner, doing planning around climate change resiliency, regulatory review, and code revisions, zoning assistance, and public engagement for municipalities on climate change adaptation and resilience planning. A small interview group consisting of myself, the Fire Chief Emergency Management Director Dearborn, former Assistant Town Manager CFO Paul Pesterzak, and HR Manager Erica Jalinas assisted in the interview process. Wolf Swamp Fields, in mid-July, and a field inspection report was done, and a report was issued. Seating will be done in the fall, and as you can see right now, if you've been by the fields lately, there's some overgrowth happening. It's temporary, until the seating begins. Rad Sports will be back on-site prepping for fall seating in the coming weeks, and working on completion of the parking lot and travelways. Fall of 2022 is when we will assess for opening of the fields. Thank you.
Any questions for Lynn?
On COVID-19 and the relaxed mask requirements at the moment, I really think the Board needs to take up the concept of, for at least entering any building that is owned and run by the town. We should, I believe we should have, if you're vaccinated, fine, if you're not, wear a mask. And I think that you need to have proof of vaccination to do that. I think, yeah, once the senior center, the Adult Center opens, I think that would be a perfect policy, I think, for any town building. After what happened in Provincetown, I think that, I think we need to be vigilant about this, and I think that, I think it's very doable. You show up at a place once, you show them the fact you've been vaccinated, you know, you're on the list, you're checked off, it's not going to be, you know, it's not owners on the town to do that. But I think particularly places like the Adult Center, when that opens, it's, you know, vaccination or masks, I think that's a policy that I would like the Board to consider as we get to the fall.
Just clarification, when you say the Board, do you mean Board of Health, or the Select?
Well, I also think we should talk to Board of Health, I think we should hear what the Board of Health, I think the Select Board should weigh in, but I'd love to hear what the Board of Health has to say about this, because I think that's important, and since Board of Health Director and the Chair, but I, you know, I see no reason why we should not do that, given what's going on out there with variants, and I like, I like the concept. I mean, I think the Northeast is, I'm skeptical, and I'm not necessarily sure of what the honor system for, I've been vaccinated, but, but I think having proof, I think it's a good thing for us to show.
Just a follow-up, Lynn, who's, where does that decision lie right now? In the past, it was, you know, Chief Dearborn and you, and it was that group that was kind of running the COVID program for the town. Is that still going to be the case moving forward, or with the emergency being disbanded, I guess, by the governor? You know, does it fall back to the Select Board or the Board of Health? Where does that decision lie? Because I agree with Steve, I think something needs to be done, but I don't know, you've got established authority.
Sure. So, generally, it lies with the Board of Health, especially if you want enforcement of it, then it absolutely has to be the Board of Health. Certainly, building policy is, I think, something that is under the authority of the Town Manager, so I could do that. It's when we start trying to enforce it that we lose authority, both from the Select Board or the Town Manager. We're no longer in an emergency declaration, so Chief Dearborn doesn't have authority in his Emergency Management Director role. So, it really, at this point, could either be a recommendation, if you enter a town building, or if we wanted something stronger than that, it would be the Board of Health. So, it's something, the Health Director and I meet weekly, we discuss it. There's a meeting scheduled for the mid to end of this month with the Board of Health. A lot has been changing over the last few weeks, and certainly, I think, all of us are watching what's happened in Provincetown, and there's quite a few conversations taking place with regard to school reopening in the fall. So, I think we're going to see a lot of conversation on this over the next few weeks, and it's possible that we'll go back to requiring masks in town buildings.
Go ahead, Mark. I guess my response, Lynn, and thank you, but my response is that, I go back to last October and Halloween, and it was a different, very much a different Board of Health then, but we just kept waiting and waiting, and to a group that wasn't doing as much with the Board of Health, that's essentially, you know, appointed by the Select Board theoretically has some independent authority, but, but I'm just concerned that how we can influence, or should we, or I believe we should, influence the Board of Health and get them to move on this, because if, if they pass this prologue, we're going to be sitting here and saying we're waiting for the Board of Health, and I'm not really comfortable with that. And I don't know, and it's not a knock on anybody other than, you know, we just haven't gotten those actions done. I agree, I think, I'd rather, much rather be safe than sorry, and I think that as difficult as it is to say we're going to have an indoor mask mandate, we need to do that. I don't, I don't, I'd just like to move this along and not just say, well, we're going to rely on the Board of Health, because I don't think they'll necessarily act on their own unless they're pushed. I'd like to push.
So, the Board of Health, if they do do something, what are the enforcement penalties they can, what powers would they have?
They can ticket. Generally, we would take an educational warning stance, but they do, they would have ticketing authority.
Is that what, only be town residents, or could that be anybody?
I think anybody that's not adhering to the public health regulation that they put in place.
Okay.
It comes down also to a matter of staff capacity to enforce that. A lot of it is reactionary, and we may not have somebody to deploy on-site to that building at that time to try to figure out what's happening and try to get compliance.
It's a lot to ask of somebody, somebody who may be hostile.
Yeah, and we currently have one staff member in the Health Department right now.
When is the next Board of Health meeting?
I think it's scheduled for the mid to end of August, I don't know the exact date yet.
So, when do you guys put together, or when do they put the agenda together?
It's usually the week before.
Do you anticipate talking about this?
Oh, definitely. Yeah, this will definitely be an agenda item.
Okay. If the Board of Health did put in something in place, is there any other town resources that could be used for the enforcement?
Yeah, we'd have to explore that, whether we would reengage the COVID team to assist, that's how we handled it before. Before, we did not issue any tickets. We did education, you saw the signs up around town everywhere, hopefully. We'd probably take those out of storage and put those back up, change our town building signage. We'd also need to have a conversation if it was only town buildings, or if it was, if it did extend to school buildings, because that's a whole other area. So, it's a large conversation. It doesn't mean we shouldn't have that conversation, it's just, there's a lot of pieces to consider with it.
I'm with Mark Gold on the idea of pushing the Board of Health, not only was Halloween, it was our town meeting, about what to do about town meeting, when to, and I understand that the state gave no guidance, but that's, that's the state, this is our local board. Whatever you can do to, and with maybe the Health Director, to get these folks to say, this is, this is now, and we don't have, I don't think, you know, I don't think we have a lot of time to waste about all this, I mean, you know, we're going in the wrong direction. I think we're going okay, it's no matter, but basically.
Are you asking for, regardless of vaccination status, you'd wear a mask? Because currently, if you enter a town building and you're not vaccinated, you are supposed to wear a mask.
Right, and I think we should demand, if you're not vac, I think, I think when people come into a town building, they have the, the first time they, they show up, so we have a record, so I don't have to keep doing this every time, they show up in a town building, here's my proof I was vaccinated. Okay, you're checked off, don't need a mask. If they walk in and they don't have vaccination, put on your mask or don't come into the building. But I think that's, you know, it's the vaccination passport concept.
It's tough with town hall, where people may be in once to pay a bill and never show up again. I mean, I can see that with the Adult Center, places where there are routine programming, but.
Well, they should be sending in their town bill to the writing address.
Yeah, whatever, but a lot of people don't.
I get that.
We're very lucky in Long Meadow, thankfully, but Hammond County was just added to the CDC list of mask inside regardless today. I don't know if, yeah, Long Meadow is a little bit of an oasis, thankfully, and hopefully it stays that way.
Well, it just kind of adds to the confusion, right? We get federal recommendations, we get state recommendations, we get county-wide recommendations. Even the county recommendations, you know, Springfield and Long Meadow are very different communities, it's hard to follow, you know, frankly. So, yeah, I mean, I would hope that the Board of Health would consider this at their next meeting, and maybe we can talk about it at the September 7th meeting.
Yes.
I mean, you know, it's, I think that's all we can do at this point.
I have a question on the sewer. I came back on the, I think it was the 22nd of July, and I was driving down Laurel and dropping someone off, and there was sewer work going on at 10:30 at night on Converse. And I got a lot of questions on it after. Do we know what happened there?
Same section?
Oh, yeah.
That is construction going, okay. I don't, I don't know, I can look into it.
I assumed it was an emergency.
If I may, I actually do have the answer to that. You did email me, and I thought I emailed you back, but apparently, there was a sewer burst that night, and they had to replace that part, and it wasn't intended for them to have to do that work that night. It was a, it was kind of an emergency.
I got a couple of questions, why are they allowed to do that? I don't think they were, okay.
You're right, that I don't know.
Yeah, I assumed it was an emergency, okay. Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Anything else for Lynn? Onward to old business. Looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from Monday, July 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Michael.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Also looking for a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July 6th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Very good. Onto the Adult Center Building Project update. So, you know, Mary Beth Bergeron is here to provide an update. We've heard from some residents about concerns about room for, for, for playing bridge and for playing table tennis, and I think there was another question.
When is the building going to open?
That was the third one.
That's the important one. I'm going to kind of take these in order. Do I introduce myself again? Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness. The first question that was sent to me by the administrative assistants, assistant, rather, was within reference to tennis table, which is, most of us know it is ping pong. Yes, there are two tables there. They are Stiga tables. They are brand new. They are in the storage room of the gymnasium. I would expect, and the person who had asked me about this going back a few years ago and suggested that we get these tables, had, I had discussed this with, with him at that time, and that it would have to be played in the gymnasium, because there really isn't any other location for it to be played in. Since that period of time, interestingly, we have lined the gymnasium for three sports: basketball, pickleball, and volleyball. There will be a volleyball net at the site that I think would restrict the numbers of balls going over on one side of the court. So I think that it would be more than adequate for them to play in the gymnasium. But again, just like any of the other sports programs that might be held, it would have to be scheduled. My understanding previously that they played ping pong in late afternoon, usually after 3 o'clock. When they schedule it is not, is, is operations and doesn't really fall under the Building Committee purview. But to answer that question, yes, there is table tennis there. They're brand new. And in fact, the brand name was recommended by this person who plays, and that's why we purchased that particular brand name. It's very highly recommended, great reviews, and so, yes, that can be played. I think you've, most, most of you have received more emails and comments about the bridge. There's a backstory to this, but suffice it to say that last Friday afternoon, as a result of an email that I received and other comments that I have gotten as well about the bridge, and having met a number of people over in the multipurpose room, which is where the, initially where the bridge would have to be played, it, they felt that it was not ideal. So I gave it fairly, a fair, fairly significant amount of thought, is, well, what else might work over there? So I contacted the architect and asked him to lay out the appropriate-sized bridge tables in Classroom Number Two and Classroom Number Three. I forwarded to Lynn the diagram that I received this morning. So if you look at the diagram, these are, this actually represents two classrooms. There is a dividing wall that goes down between the two classrooms. There should be a second one there. So we can fit eight four-tops in that just Classroom Number Two, or we could dedicate on Monday and Friday afternoons both Classroom Number Two and Classroom Number Three, which does accommodate, do you have that, Mike?
Yeah, let me just. It looks like he's on the left there.
Pardon?
Is that it, right there?
This one?
Yeah, it's bigger.
Okay, there you go. This accommodates the 15 tables, which would be 15 four-tops. My understanding is that they have up to 60 players. There's the 60 players. What would, this would mean, however, is that we would have to purchase 15 additional tables. So the square tables, and those tables might have to come down and go back up again each time they played, because there are other rectangular tables in both of those classrooms now, similar, exactly like the tables that are in Classroom Number One. But this does work. It'll take a little bit of effort on part of the people who play bridge, and perhaps that's part of their rental agreement, because they do rent the space, and the, an agreement will be required. But I believe if you're in agreement, that the problem is resolved. I believe they can play in there up to 60 players.
Would these tables only be used for bridge?
Correct.
Is, is there a place?
I guess they could be used for anything else. I mean, they'd be town-owned.
Are they just like plastic tables?
Yeah, they're pretty much lightweight plastic tables. They easily go down and come up. My understanding is that the ideal bridge table is 33 inches square. That's what these are.
Learn something new every day.
Yes. Believe me, I've done research about bridge, and I've never played the game. So I believe that that issue is resolved if that has your nod of approval, and you can certainly respond to anyone who emails you about this issue. It's on the second floor. They'll have to take the elevator or take the stairs to get up there, but it does work. The reason that the multipurpose room didn't work is that they are round tables. Does it work? It does, but it's not ideal. This is an ideal situation with not a huge expenditure. So moving forward, the opening of the building. I cannot tell you how many times I thought we were opening the building within a few weeks. Even today, that is not the case. We will not be opening, in my opinion, in August. It'll be possibly, possibly, capital P, sometime in September. There's a number of reasons for that. We are currently working off of three punch lists. One is a Monford, W.J. Monford. They're the Contractor of Record. They have a punch list. The architect has a punch list, and there is a kitchen punch list. The kitchen is not ready to be used. In fact, late on Friday, it was discovered that the refrigeration was not working. And so today, I saw a workman there, I assume, trying to get it operable. Cannot open unless the kitchen can open, because as you know, we provide not only daily lunch, but also the Meals on Wheels program would be run out of there, and that's, you know, going to run us anywhere from 120 to 180 meals that have to be cooked out of that kitchen. Clearly, the, I would certainly recommend that the staff be allowed to move into the building and occupy the building for a couple of weeks prior to having a ribbon cutting, because primarily, the kitchen staff has to be able to prepare meals a couple of times in that kitchen and make it operational. It is not operational at this time. There are a number of repairs and corrections that have to be made, and there's some equipment that is due to be in. Most importantly, however, last week, oh, this is, this has actually been sort of like a three, I would say a three-week issue. Most importantly, there have been two letters sent by the architect to W.J. Monford rejecting two items that have been supposedly completed. One is, and the least important of the two, is the soil conditions at the property do not meet specifications. It is a fairly lengthy list that there were testing done on the soil conditions, and it did not meet the specifications, and in fact, material was not brought in where it should have been brought in. Going, however, to number two, and probably the most important, is the parking lot. The parking lot also does not meet specifications. The architect brought up the issue initially, that it, that it seemed like it wasn't done appropriately or correctly. We had it tested by Allied Testing. The test results came back negatively. I then contacted Jeff McAlmond, the DPW Director, because he has extensive experience, obviously, with paving. And he went over, he issued a letter saying it's amongst the worst three jobs he's ever seen. Going forward, I contacted the OPM and said, I think we should have a second test done. So we did have a second test done. That second test was done by O'Reilly, Talbot, and Olken over in West Springfield. That test result came back negative as well. The issue is not, the issue is if we open the building and then have to close the building for a couple of weeks while it's redone, that would not go over well with the town. In addition, today, the architect sent a letter to the contractor asking for immediate response to both of those letters, so that at least we can attempt to resolve these issues moving forward and perhaps open. However, we cannot get a certificate of occupancy at this time, because there's concrete work that needs to be done in order to make the exterior ADA compliant. So in my opinion, we are not going to open this month, and in fact, I would think that perhaps towards the end of September, we might open, depending also on what happens with COVID. But don't put that in writing. That's just my best guess at this time. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yes, Mark?
Thank you, Mary Beth. You mentioned this at the end, this concrete work, that, that's separate from the soil in the parking lot.
That is correct. It's part of the punch list. Uncorrectly, and so therefore, there's these vacant spaces, and that pitch towards the parking lot has to be compliant with ADA regulations, and right now, it's dirt. So it, that has to be done before we could possibly open.
And just, who does?
I don't believe that Paul Healy would give a certificate of occupancy for it.
And is your committee doing the negotiation? Is our OPM doing the negotiation? Is the architect? Who's, who's negotiating with the contractor on these?
I would say that it is a cooperative effort between Lynn Simmons, the Town Manager, the OPM, the architect, and myself at this time.
All hands on deck. Thank you.
Is the soil conditions, something structural for foundation purposes, is that for planting?
It is basically, well, let me just, I'll go through kind of the list with you. This is landscape issues. It's this topsoil, obviously, was not in conformance with specifications. The state recommended certain quantities of nitrogen, et cetera. Those were not met. The lawn material that they submitted to the architect is not what was used. I could kind of go on from there. I mean, it's a pretty lengthy letter. They didn't apply the seed appropriately. The mulch was not done appropriately. We've lost some of the landscaping already. The lawn does not meet the specifications. It's, it's pretty lengthy.
So the parking is more major? Is that, it will fail?
This could be done October, in October or November.
Right, it doesn't sound like.
That, that does not impact our ability to open.
The asphalt could fail. Is that, is there a subsurface issue, or?
Well, the material, again, that was installed was not in conformance with specifications. They submitted certain material that was approved, and that's not what was installed. There is a tack coat that goes between the second and the third and final coat that was not done appropriately. The joint sealant was not applied as called for in the specifications. There are defects in relationship to the, to the workmanship when that top coat was installed, and those are numerous. There's like, I don't know, a dozen faults in the parking lot that are a workmanship issue versus a material issue.
Was it, was that a subcontractor did?
It was.
Okay. And do we know, have they been paid?
No, they have not. Well, they have not been paid in full.
Okay.
And the architect right now, not the, I'm sorry, W.J. Monford is looking for substantial completion. It certainly would be my recommendation that we not give them substantial completion until we have an appropriate response to these issues. And as much as I certainly personally would love to see this building open, I don't think it's in the town's best interest at this time. That's my personal opinion only.
Are we holding back a pretty hefty payment?
There's a pretty hefty payment. The total of all of the things on the punch list to mill the top coat off of the parking lot, to correct the grading issues, we're talking between a quarter of a million, $300,000. So clearly, we're not releasing all of the money. We have, however, in a, in, in, you know, to be transparent, there are some subcontractors, like the electrician, that have completed their work, and so we have released funds for specific subcontractors. We, we don't want to harm the business operations of certain subcontractors when they have done their work appropriately.
And have they been, have you confirmed they have been paid, those subcontractors?
Yes, some of those subcontractors have been paid. Clearly not the one that was primarily responsible for both of these issues on the table. I will also say as an aside, and just for information, information purposes, one of the jobs that this subcontractor did was install a retaining wall next to the pool. It failed twice, and we had, the contractor had to pull in a second contractor to build the wall, and that has been completed. And I was over there this afternoon, and he's made some of the other corrections that had to be made in that general area, and some of which, I will say, the second subcontractor did at no charge. So I would like, I would like to see the Contractor of Record hire this company, but of course, as we all know, it all comes down to money, and we don't control who they hire.
Anything else? So when do we expect to, to get a response from the letters that we're sending out?
Well, the letter that Catlin sent out today at my request is that we're requesting immediate response. What do I expect? Can't answer that question. I, my hope would be that they would respond before the end of this week. We can always notify their bonding company that these letters have been sent and that we're, we're challenging the work that was done on those two specific issues. That generally puts the fear of the Lord in a contractor. Because if their bond actually is called, it would put them in a very precarious position moving forward to get business through the state.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much. I wish I had better news. That's, those are the facts, though.
Thank you. So next up is the naming of Warren Cowell's Way at the DPW. Looking for a motion to approve the public naming of the DPW facility entrance to Warren Cowell's Way.
So moved.
One second. Any discussion? Mike, can you call the law, please?
Mr. Morantz? Oh, sorry. Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Told you it was going to take me a while.
Next up is the CARES Act and ARPA funds update, and I'll flip this one over to Lynn.
Thank you. So in your packet was a memo prepared by Jennifer Leiden, the Finance Director. Jennifer is on a scheduled vacation this week, so I did not ask that she zoom into this. I figured I could try to handle any questions you have, and if not, bring her to the August 16th meeting. So just in summary, the town received approval to spend $1.3 million in change from the state's allocation of the CARES Act funding. This was issued in March of 2020. There's a summary here, I can read them if you'd like, of the items that we've allocated towards CARES Act. At the bottom there, I think, is what's of most note tonight, is we've been trying to reconcile these accounts here. We've submitted one point, $1.39 million. Of that, we've received word that $70,000 is not going to be eligible. That remaining balance, which is roughly $130 and change, we are disputing right now. So we do have documentation from the state that we had approval to expend the funds that way. They've since kicked it back, and so now we're appealing that decision. It's possible that we won't be successful, and so that $70,000 amount could rise. We have identified other avenues of funding to pay for those costs if we need to. The $70,000 right now, if I, my memory serves me correctly, is mainly attributed to police and fire overtime, and so we will be taking care of that through other personnel line items. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have on this. This is separate from ARPA funding. So this is just the CARES Act municipal program.
Yeah, Lynn, I, I guess that's what I was trying to understand here is, so this $1.39 is money we spent and that we've submitted for reimbursement, and they've come back with, is it all but $197,000 or $200,000, or is it all but $270,000? Or is it all but $270,000?
So, we submitted for 1.39.
Right.
$70,000 of that is not going to be eligible. We know that right now. That's not disputed. There's, I think it's like 126 that is still up for dispute.
So, it's an additional?
Yeah.
So, that 70 is part of the 196?
Yes.
That's what I was trying to-
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And the dispute basis, we thought that's what the rule said. You could spend it on-
And we have documentation to prove you allowed this expense before we made that purchase. How come you're changing your mind?
Okay. And so, they're withholding the money from us at this point in time? Is that, you said we got this down?
They're withholding allowing us to apply CARES Act funding towards it. We've already bought it. We've already paid for it. It's just a matter of whether we can use the CARES Act funding for it. That's how we've charged it.
Any other questions on this?
I can give you a brief update on ARPA if you'd like. So, I've been meeting with the finance director, and we've been discussing ARPA as more information is gained on eligible uses. And we've definitely been fielding requests from departments, department heads, some unions, and one board and committee on eligible uses of the funds. We will be developing a memo. It will be distributed by the middle of this month outlining how those bodies could submit a request and the information that would be required on how they want to use it and whether or not they feel that it's eligible based on the criteria we provide them. They would need to have those funding requests in by the middle of September. The finance director and I would then review those requests and make a prioritization list. We would then bring that back to you and have you review what we're requesting be prioritized and then the bulk of the rest of the applications as well. And then, we could have a discussion about that, whether you concur with our selected prioritization or if you feel, you know, there should be a different approach taken. I anticipate that will likely come to you late September or sometime in October. At this current time, we only have $896,000 in ARPA funding received so far. The other half of that should come sometime late fall. That's the state allocation. There's a county allocation that represents $3 million. We don't have information yet on how that's going to be distributed. So, we're not behind at all in determining this.
So, Lynn, unlike the CARES Act, what I hear you saying is ARPA funds, we're going to prioritize before we spend them as opposed to, because I assume we could come up with millions and millions of dollars worth of opportunities.
And the use of ARPA funds is broader than what CARES Act was.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Lynn on ARPA? Thank you. Next up, we'll stay in the town manager's hot seat. Town manager and select board fiscal 22 goals.
Okay. So, at your last meeting, I think it was, you asked for a document that kind of listed out who these items would be assigned to. And I can't remember if it was that meeting or ensuing conversations that the chair and I had regarding status and then a document to help track this. So, it was recommended by Chairman Strange that there be a living document. And so, what you have here tonight in your packet is actually a PDF of that living document. It would be a Google Doc that would be shared with you so you could see the status on these goals. Or if some of these goals were assigned to you, you could type your update in there as well. I've started to do that as much as I had updates for. Some of these, I do have additional updates for but didn't have time to update the document before publication. And certainly, you know, we can discuss how I've assigned some of these just as, in a draft form. And I'm open to recommendations or suggestions for changes on doing this a different way or assigning them differently.
Go ahead. So, Lynn, one of the things that I got used to in another life is a document some people have called the RACI document or RC document, which basically for anything that you have, you list who's accountable, responsible consultant form. And I guess I've looked at this, I looked it over, and I thought it was great. The problem is, you're down for everything. And I know ultimately, the buck stops in your office. And under my discussion, I've just had this RACI thing. You're accountable for it all, but I think it would be helpful for us to see who's responsible. In other words, who's going to actually put pencil to paper or put the actions in place so that we can get a sense that where you farm these out to? And, you know, it need not be, you know, Barry Jarvis or Jeff McAlmond. It can be Parks and Rec, or it could be DPW, or it could be a- But for me, it would be helpful because right now, it's just overwhelming and you're assigned to everything. And I'm not sure that that's what's really going to happen from our perspective. And I think ultimately, you are accountable. But I'd like to think that, you know, somebody's got on their individual goals document the responsibility for this, and then they can set up that, you know, and I spoke about this before, the who, what, and by when. And they may be the who, the what, and by when. And I'd just like to throw that out as an opportunity.
I will say, this document started really with, I guess, my evaluation, where it was goals of the town manager. And then, it kind of has morphed from there. So, it's a little bit bigger than that now. I felt the same way as I was typing it and assigning TM to all of these categories. And so, I definitely agree with you. And some of this may, as I look down this list here, like certainly the website refresh, that's not something I'm taking on myself. That's something I'm overseeing, and we should add a category that says responsible. And then, I can-
And I have nothing wrong. I think, you know, there's a hierarchy of documents. And that original goals document is a great one. But there's got to be paper behind it, you know, so that you don't make one massive document at the front, but have one and then break them down, I think. And as much for you to use as anybody, more so even than for us. But something that would be available if we wanted to see how they were doing. And those documents can also be the, if you will, the things that we use to track progress on them because they're going to have a by what, who, what, and by when. And somebody can say, okay, if it's by, you know, February 15th, they can say, okay, comments is by December 1st, here's where they are, or whatever it is. Just a better tracking thing. Because otherwise, you can't do all this stuff.
One section that I would like to kind of call out separately because I do believe that it needs to almost take on a life of its own is the Coalition for Racial Justice Report. That, to me, kind of stands out on this list here of something that we could either create a separate subcommittee for or hold a separate special meeting on to just take a deep dive into it and figure out what areas you want to prioritize or what areas you may think need further study before we move forward with them. But that, that seems to be something bigger than just a goal for this year. That's just my initial reaction to it when I added it to the list here.
I would agree with that. They gave us that report several months ago. And so, I'm sure they'd like to see some action taken upon it. I think we should do that.
So, it'd be a special meeting to discuss only the LCRJ report?
That's just one idea. I mean, you, you know, it could be a task force or a subcommittee or however, however you decide to handle it, I guess, or-
Anybody have thoughts on that?
I mean, I think we ought to get a subcommittee of whether it's this, it ought to be this board because we're the ones that just comes up and says, okay, here's what they said and here's what, you know, again, what are we going to do? When are we going to do it? How are we going to do it? You know, unfortunately, we can't do a lot physically ourselves, but we can say we want the talented, whether there are bylaws in place or, you know, that we want to put in place or actions we want to do, we ought to put together that action list. So, I think it ought to be outside. Because I think if we had a special meeting, we'd be sitting here all night long and wouldn't get anywhere where two people could go off in a room and over three meetings make a lot of progress.
Anybody else?
I think that's right. I'd agree. If we can get some pointed suggestions, and there's a lot of things in the report, but if we can figure out ways to implement that and, because it would take us, we just don't have the time to do it. And if we can get other people who are focused on it, I think that's a great way to do it.
Yeah. So, Mark, the question is, should it be just select board members? Or should we go back to that group and say, we want a couple of people? Can we carry a couple of you over with a couple of people from the select board to put the action items into, on paper?
That's what I was thinking. I'm next.
Yeah, that's probably what you want. But it needs to be done then as a town manager's task force. Otherwise, you're, maybe we don't, but otherwise, you're into open meeting laws and minutes and posting things, and it starts to take a two-month project to a nine-month project.
I mean, in reading it, what I thought would be helpful is breaking it out into subgroups that are town operation, general, community engagement, and then maybe something with schools or the child, school age population. Because there was a lot in there that was town operation that I could just start working with department heads on and implementing into our daily practices or already provide you updates on stuff that we have already started doing because a lot of our member organizations have been having the same conversation across the state for the last year. But it's bigger than that. And so, I was thinking if we could section it out, then pieces could be assigned out that way as well. So, maybe the task force can make that recommendation and then assign tasks to each of those areas.
Right.
I do think that the schools in some way, shape, or form should be involved sooner as opposed to later as this gets going. That's a big portion, I think.
We can ask, but we can't require, I mean, we-
But I think we should ask.
I sure agree.
We think two, two, and two? Two select board, two LCRJ, two school committee?
Sounds, unless you want an outnumber. Hopefully, you won't need that.
Lynn's the tiebreaker. So, what would be like a next step on that?
Well, if we're doing two, two, and two, and it's from those groups, I would think maybe a letter from the select board chair or an email explaining, you know, sharing a copy of the report again and then explaining how we'd like to take it forward. Schools, I will say, has been doing a lot of work on this as well. They had some of their own stuff happening. So, they may be able to bring stuff to the table that we could apply in other areas.
Do we need to talk about where the two people would be?
Over here.
I'd like to volunteer.
Is it Tom because he's not here?
Yes, I think.
I can't, I can't take on more without a conversation at home. I'm interested.
Send out, she's watching. Send out your letter and see who responds from the select board.
Very passive aggressive. Was there anything else, Lynn, you wanted to talk through with respect to the goals?
Not, I mean, other than just expressing that I would love the board to stay engaged on this, especially on, you know, some of them that I did assign to the board. I think there's some there that could move forward, you know, kind of with or without me or, you know, in coordination. You know, the last one sticks out to me. We could, you know, that can be discussed anyway.
So, what is that again?
So, this one Tom had brought up. So, let's see. February of 2020, we were discussing the charter review recommendations that had not been brought forward to town meeting yet. Chapter six, section six regarding the superintendent. The charter review committee had made some recommended changes to that in their packet, and those had not been moved forward yet. So, we started to have that conversation and then-
Do we need to approve them first before they go to town meeting? What's the process for that?
Yeah. I'll be glad to summarize. I've got all that stuff, Mark. I'll be glad to summarize it.
Can we just put it on the next agenda?
Sure. It's not going to be easy because it's, it's school, again, it's the school committee and, you know, so, but it's something we can, we ought to get our act together, get it to the schools and let them know what we're planning.
Okay, gotcha.
This kind of thing, I think. So, or what we'd like to do, not what we're going to do, what we'd like to do.
Right, right, okay.
I can summarize that for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Lynn, one of the things, just to kind of follow up. I think that every one of these line items deserves a tab on the spreadsheet that takes each one of these and has a tab, has a little bit, you know, when you dole it out to the next person, let them put down what they're going to do. And then, we can track it on those separate tabs kind of thing. Maybe that's the way to do it.
It's a great document, though, because it helps, helps us understand what's going on, see what's going on, but also context. So, I really appreciate that. Any other work we can pile on, Lynn? Okay. Next up is new business. We have a block party request.
I'll recommend we approve the block party request for, I guess it's Dover and Chatham Road for September 19th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. with no rain date. So, they're on their own as recommended by the police department.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
For the last block party, though, didn't we have it subject to something? Was it, or we did?
It was subject to the police recommendation, but this time, we got it. We got it in advance.
Excellent.
Michael?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Quarterly investment reports.
I have Ms. Burnell, town treasurer, in the Zoom chat, so I'm going to let her in the meeting now. Can you hear us all right?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
All right.
I tried to get my video going. I don't know if you'll be able to see me, but I'll try and get it going. Okay, anyway, I'll keep going. So, good evening, everyone. I wanted to take a moment and first of all, thank you all for approving the increase to the new investment- to the new investment limits. I truly believe that this is going to make a huge difference when we're investing our funds for the town, so first of all, thank you all very much for that. And I won't go word for word off of what I submitted to you for the cash investment policy, but I did want to touch on a couple of few really important things. So we continue to see over the last quarter a drop in our interest rates, and that tags back to our increase in the limits. Adam Savings Bank, for one, had a huge drop from 1% down to .60%. They still hold the majority of our investments as they still reign as the highest with our interest rate at .60. That's the highest across all financial institutions right now, followed in second by Monson Savings Bank with .50. So we are investing a lot of our funds in those institutions because it does have the highest interest rates, but we are spreading it out among the portfolio so that we do have a fair share. Country Bank also experienced a drop from .35% to .15%. So the assistant treasurer and I are closely monitoring those interest rates and making sure that we are taking opportunities where we can and transferring funds so that we are taking advantage of the interest rates as we can. The investment income we earned this quarter on the OPAP Pension Reserve Investment Fund was just short of $300,000. This was an increase of $122,543 over last quarter, and the June 30th balance in the OPAP has now risen to $4,787,000 and some change. So we are going to obviously continue to closely monitor these accounts. One piece of information that I wanted to share with you that I just received this afternoon is that Century Bank and Eastern Bank will now be merging, so this was news to me, and I thought it might be news to some of you. They will now fall under the banner of Eastern Bank as long as the pending regulatory is approved. So they said they would share more information with us once that is approved, but that we should experience no change in service or products, so that's great to hear, but I am interested in seeing what the interest rates will result as, as those mergers do continue forward. So I will keep you guys updated, and hopefully we'll see some good news coming ahead. We're optimistic that the interest rates will shoot back up, but it's something only time will tell.
Thank you. Do any of our financial whizzes have questions for Erica?
I don't have any questions, I just have a comment. Thank you, Erica, for, that's a great report. I also want to commend whoever it is who continues to have the investment with the, with the prim for our OPAP, it's the best thing we ever did, and just a shame we didn't do it three years sooner, but it's, it's really paying off.
I'm assuming that that return is basically market-related, the fact that it's done so well, is that, is this all market-oriented?
Is there anything else for Erica? Short and sweet. Thank you very much, Erica, have a good night.
Thank you, you as well.
Last but not least, the tax ceiling warrant. So I had, during our agenda review, I asked Lynn to put this on, just because I feel like it's kind of slipped through the cracks during COVID, and, you know, regardless whether it's slipping through the cracks or not, we're still marching towards our $25 mill rate, and just wanted to put it out there and see if people had thoughts for how we should, or we could proceed with the, I don't even know if the tax ceiling task force has been meeting, if they're still in, in business, who's on it, I wasn't really too, too much involved in that, but I think it would be worthwhile to get that, get that group started again, particularly with a focus on kind of a simple, clear messaging campaign for, for the public, because I think at the last town meeting, the minutes which were included in the, in the agenda, you know, we really didn't do a good job of explaining clearly, you know, what the, what the issue was. I think a lot of people who came up to me, you know, before the meeting and during the meeting, they thought that if, if they had voted, if town meeting voted for this, that we'd be able to increase their taxes as much as we wanted every year, you know, not understanding the, the duality of, you know, the $25 mill rate and the, and the 2.5% annual tax increase, so.
I think I remember Steve Marantz standing up and saying exactly the opposite at the town meeting, so, and I, I know people hear what they want to hear, but I agree, it's a messaging thing. I feel pretty strongly on this, and, but I, if it comes up every meeting, then it just keeps getting shot down because we're not getting through. So, yeah, we need to work on it, absolutely.
So, Mark, I'll take the, the heat for this, this one. I, I guess I am still the chair of the tax ceiling task force that has not met over the last year. It was a terrible failure, I guess, at the, at the town meeting, if you recall that. Town meeting hit just about the time COVID was going on, and we just, we planned on handouts and none of that kind of thing happened. I guess my, my concern is, I think you're right, we need a different approach. I'm not sure I'm the guy to do that approach if it's, because what we're looking at is communications and public relations or whatever it is, and frankly, we get into that meeting and we, the, the group talks about all the great things that, and why we all need it, but we don't really have the strong marketing component, or outreach component, or public education component, or whichever is the appropriate one, it's probably public education component that we need, and I'm just wondering if, you know, the, a task force that has, you know, people from our finance committee and people from our, you know, our state representative's office and from our school, if that's, that's still the, the appropriate group, and I guess I'm telling you, I don't think it is. If the issue is, we know where we want to be, we've had agreement that this is where we want to, the direction we want to go, we just need a more effective way of getting there. I just want to bring back the Long Middelancers or somebody that did a very, very effective communications program to get this message out. I just, I'm at a loss on how to do it, so I'm, well, you know, and recognize I failed at it.
Well, the first question would be, which town meeting, would we want to bring this back up at? Would you want to do the fall town meeting, or would you next spring?
It'd have to be the summer.
And then I think if we actually have, maybe, I don't know, if the last town meeting was recorded, I, I, we definitely need a public education somehow, some way, but if you take a look at what happened at the last town meeting versus what happened at the spring town meeting, where we wanted to fund $100,000 bucks for money to get us, to get us $6 million or $16 million, and that went down at, at last, at the first town meeting, and it passed fairly close to unanimously the second town meeting, and I think that was, there was a coordinated effort by more than just one person from the select board getting up there saying, this is a really good idea. It's not quite the same as, you know, you spend $400,000 bucks and your return is up to $10 million, that's, that's pretty good, but I think it's, I think it does take a coordinated pitch from all the different committees involved, and I do think it's, it's hard, and I do think that people think, well, if we pass this thing, then it's, you know, it's taxation forever. I also think it's also, it's not a sure thing that if we pass this, this is never going to happen anyway.
Right.
This goes to the legislature, and I'm not sure they've ever done it before. We would be early on the list at first to say, you know, time, time for a change. I mean, it is time for a change, this was what, done in '82, '78, I mean, come on.
Yeah, '19, '22, '23.
Yeah, times have changed, but, yes, but I think-
He almost was not throwing this one.
No, he wasn't. But if we're starting it out, yeah, that's, we're talking, you know, not quite, we're talking June of next year, I mean, I think we can make it, you know, hammer way at it, because it's, it's going to be imperative.
Question is, who's the right group? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, just pegging back on what you both said, $100,000, I think, passed because the Prop 2, 2.5 wasn't up. If that was up, then the $100,000 wouldn't have passed. I think it's drawing out a certain contingent of people, and if, or you could pass out things, do education at the meeting, but the battle's lost. It depends on who shows up, I think, and the education needs to be done beforehand. We need to get people motivated and explain, and get them out there, and I know, I, my age group, people have kids, it's hard, they don't want, it's hard to go to town meeting. It's also easy to make an excuse to not go to town meeting.
But Josh, those are the people who are going to get affected, because there's kids in schools, it's going to be their school budget.
Absolutely, and, but it's, we just have to motivate people to go, to show up, and that starts early, and, and, but, you know, I'm fairly tuned in, I guess, and I don't know how to get, to get it out. I don't know if we can bring, bring in a consultant or a marketing firm or something, or somebody, and there are marketers, there are people who live in town that could do it, we just have to get them involved.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a big thing that I, I have ideas about, but I don't know how to do it.
Right.
I know, I think I know the problem.
Yeah.
I don't know the solution.
I think that's where we all are. So how many people were on the task force?
Seven, nine.
Twelve, oh, twelve or fourteen, yeah.
Oh, wow.
It was, it was a big group, but again, you know, I, I could go through it and look it up, but, but it is representatives from the finance, you know, it, it was everybody who's dealing with the problem, what's the best solution to the problem, but not a, not a public education component.
Right.
And if that's where we want to go, you know, we need, and I'll, I'll be glad to try to lead it, but I just clearly wasn't the right person to do it last time.
Was, is it a select board task force, or is it a town manager, or does it matter?
Well, it was a, it was a town manager's task force, only because we didn't, no, I take that back. We had, we had meetings, minutes, and it was all done formally, so, it was done formally.
Yeah.
Now, the, the bigger issue is if, if, you know, and we've laid out this, done a lot of work with legislators with, you know, I know Robin Frichette, who's the legislative aide for, for Brian Ash, did a lot of work putting together what we could, we would ought to be proposing to the legislature and things like that. So I think we've got it down the format we want it, we've just got to sell it.
I just feel like that information is, is the addendum, right? The, the presentation is very simple.
This doesn't make your taxes go up.
These are taxes, this is, this is what, you know, whatever it is, visually, for, for people to see.
Well, the other visual that has to be addressed, or the other concept is, you know, our tax rate, vis a vis the rest of the state, is really high. That's what goes up there. And so it's, well, we have the highest tax rate in the state, so therefore we must have the highest taxes in the state, which, that, that misconception really needs to be addressed head-on and-
We have, we have just, we had last, last time they issued, we had the 47th highest tax, taxes in the state.
Right, right.
Even though we have the highest tax rate.
And that needs to be just thrown out there continually.
I've had that conversation so many times with people, and I just want to beat my head against the wall, I think it's, it's impossible.
Well, I, I mean, one of the things that was talked about was, you know, do you do a, here's what the budget would look like this year if we'd hit, if, if this year we hit the ceiling. That's a ridiculous amount of work to do, but, but it, it energizes the constituents that would be most impacted by it. Josh, to your point, is that gets people out, because it's, it's not a matter, it's, it's not if it's going to happen, it's when. Now, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, real estate prices are going up 25% or 30%, and next year our tax rate's going to drop 15% or 20% as a rate, even though our taxes will go up the same 1.75% or, or 2% they did this year, but I, there's no guarantee of that, and if it does, we probably bought ourselves three or four, or five more years, but, you know, this idea of, here's what it would look like, I don't know if that's, we really need to do it, or if that's the component of the, of the marketing plan for this, or the public education plan, I don't know.
So do we look at reviving the task force with a very clear directive that it's to bring an article to town meeting? So that's our end date, so somebody could commit, and it's just until next June, or next May. So that might entice people, because it's a very defined amount of time, and then also define the categories of people that we're looking for. Someone with school-age children, someone with a marketing background, someone who's opposed to, to the tax ceiling lifting, because I think it'd be interesting to have that viewpoint on there as well, you know, someone that's in the over-60 population, to try to help, you know, network out, and also hear their opinion from their different, different group.
Yeah, no, that's great, that's great. I think ultimately, if you look at, if you look at 20 years down the, down the line, there's going to be, if nothing is done, there's going to be, you know, years where we cannot raise taxes, and what is our town going to look like? You know, this isn't just kind of a five to seven-year thing, if you, something has to happen, or else we're not going to be able to, it's going to be, everything's going to be privatized because we can't pay for what the town needs through tax dollars.
Well, the other thing, Mark, and, and is that, you know, we're going to take it out of the tax base, you know, we're going to be charging people for trash, trash collection, we're going to be charging people for every service we can take, you know, talk about parking wreck being charged for everything, you know, there's going to be nothing in, in the tax base, except for police and fire, and maybe even then we can have a fire district and a police district and all, all that other stuff. So the issue is, you know, people may not save money, so it's, you know, from my perspective, it, you know, it's, you're not going to save money by hitting the tax limit, all you're going to do is shift the way you pay for it. We've got stormwater utility, we're going to have, you know, that kind of thing, and people need to understand it. We're better off keeping it in the tax rate, because it is under control, as opposed to once you move trash out of the tax rate, we can raise tax, trash fees 50%.
Right.
You know, and, and that's, that's, to me, the, I'm not going to say the threat, that's the problem, that's the reality.
Well, the thing is, in terms of the task force, if the task force is going to represent different constituencies in this town, and then, and then when it comes to town meeting, except for the folk who think it's not a good idea, I mean, those folks, A, need to get their constituents at town meeting, and B, that needs to be the presentation. Those folks need to make the presentation from parks and racks and trash and all that stuff, I mean, that's, I think that's, that's the way to bring people out and to make, and to make the argument.
Yeah. I always think of, at the, the first COVID meeting, where the tax cap got voted against, and then the next, I think the next warrant article was the skate park, voting for the skate park, which passed overwhelmingly, because they had their people out.
Yeah.
And that was-
That's it.
Yeah.
That's the way town meeting works.
I'm learning.
Period of democracy. Someday, Josh, I'll tell you about my pink and purple polka dot house plan.
Oh, boy.
You're going to require every house in town to be pink with purple polka dots, all I need is 50 friends at a time. Anyway, the, you know, I'm, I'll, I'll bring people back and I'll, I'll try to get this, this going, and Lynn, I think your approach is, is the right one with a very specific direction, try to reconstitute, and we had people from, you know, from a couple of our unions in town on this, we thought the town, town employees were important, so, you know, there's a group of people, but none of us were of the persuasive type to public relations.
It was also, it was a very tough meeting, that was, the atmosphere was really ardent.
You know, the other thing is, in, in some fairness, is we were working up till the, the deadline, getting this thing in the right format, you know, with, with Robin and other people. Now that we've got it in that format, we can, we know what we've got to deal with, right?
Yeah, I mean, I just think it's messaging, I just, you know, just education, educational messaging, that's, that's what we need.
I'm glad you put it on there, I think it's, it's good to keep it in mind, and I'm glad we have a goal.
There's so many things going on, you know?
So how are we, what, what's the next step, then? Are we looking at developing a draft of the different sectors of people that we want to try to seek to serve on it, or do you want to engage the prior group?
I, I will suggest that what we do is engage the prior group with the goal of, you folks all put yourselves out of business and let's put together the right group who's, who can take this across the goal line. You know, they're as good as anybody because they represent a cross-section of the town to try to put that together, but I'm not sure they're the right group.
And, and maybe they are, you know, it's-
Yeah, maybe they are.
There weren't, really was no kind of focus on that, you know, so maybe there is somebody who's, you know, got a flair for communications.
Maybe learn from your mistakes, or mistake or failure.
Take your foot out of your mouth, then.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we're doing great.
It's a practice run.
Right.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the- Yeah, I'll, I'll make the commitment to bring the gang back together.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, that's it.
Restart it, okay.
The first step is getting back together, see who's still around, who's still is interested, and, you know, we'll go from there.
I think if we're going to look at reviving it in a different form or adding members, the goal should be to have that done by the middle of September, just because May is going to be here quickly.
Right, yeah.
I mean, the towns that warrant deadlines are, start all the way back in like, what, February, March, uh, June, January, May?
They signed the warrant in March.
Yeah. So working back from that deadline, it doesn't really leave a lot of time.
Should we leave, should we leave this as kind of like a, an ongoing agenda item?
I think so.
I think so. I could certainly try to report on it and.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, it's every two weeks, you're not necessarily.
I think the finance, the finance committee prevailed pretty nicely at the last town meeting. I think the, the finance committee would certainly be an important committee to have behind us. I'm sure they agree that this needs to be done, but I think, you know, the only item they did not recommend for was defeated at the, the town meeting.
You can add this to our goals. You can get credit for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, it's that time.
Done?
Yep.
No correspondence?
I think so. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Mikey B., do you think?
Mr. Strange?
Yes.
Mr. Morantz?
Yep.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for tuning in or watching on replay. We'll be back August 16th in two weeks, and we'll see you then.